Is 5:02, so I will call the North Kingston School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first agenda item is to go into executive session, so we'll be convening into executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of any discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified advance in writing and advise that they may require that the discussion can be held in open meeting pursuant to RIGL 42465A1. School representative to the NK Audit Committee, Director of Finance Contract, Non-Certified Employee A, Director of Finance Contract. And then, number two, sessions pertaining to potential litigation/ legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2, National Social Media Litigation Campaign Participation. Do I have a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Okay, hello? Okay, you good? Mike, are you good? All right, perfect. Okay, so we will reconvene into open session, and the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you're able, please join me. Okay, thank you. The roll call, please.
Erin Earl.
Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you. On the calendar?
Students, and January 16th is a professional development day, and that's no school for students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the DMS Boys Cross Country Students, and so I will turn it over to Dr. Duba to introduce.
There we go. So it's always exciting when we have students here for the school committee, at the school committee meeting, because we really love to hear what's happening in the schools and recognize our students. So this evening, we have Coach Mike Florio with the Boys Cross Country Team, and they're here tonight because they're being recognized for some of their accomplishments this season. I do have something to read, but did you want to say anything, or? Sure.
We appreciate that you're running, Mike.
All right, so I know everybody's got a lot going on, but I just wanted to recognize the boys. A real quick summary, just so you can really understand what these gentlemen bring to the table here. They won all their divisions this year, they were 4-0. They went to the state meet, and they won the state meet. If you took out their top two players, their top two athletes, our 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, still would have won the state title. So it's a real special group of, there's not one, they're a unified team, they're incredible. It was such an honor to coach these guys, and the great news is, they're going to be, they're all going to North Kingston High School next year. They've agreed to stay together. That's an elite group of people, this, the, sorry, the North Kingston High School Cross Country Team's going to be very good for the next four years. So just really proud of them, and, you know, thanks guys for staying together and making my life easy, and the two other coaches that helped me, Coach Orr and Coach Florio, Terry, they were incredible to work with this year, and everybody just worked really well, and it was, it was a team effort, no one was bigger than anyone, they all worked together, it was awesome. So, thank you for the recognition, thank you for having us here, we're super honored to be here. All right, thank you.
And I think there was a recent event that was out of state that they competed in as well, right? It was a Junior Olympics event that some of the players were in?
Yeah, so we went to Kentucky last weekend, and the five Davisville Middle School runners who competed against all the other middle school runners, we came in fourth in the nation, which is a pretty incredible thing. The R3 team collectively came in 19th, but that just shows you the power of what's going on in that corner right there, it's just incredible. The sport is, it's growing, it's popular, you know, we're really proud of them, and yeah, man, it's been an awesome ride.
And the R3, that's an outside running group that they work on, so they're not just practicing in school, they're also practicing out of school as well.
Yes, it's a roadie team, like, most like local schools in the area, the kids do it, so it's just extra practice.
Okay, there's some amazing accomplishments for you, so good job.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, again, congratulations, we do have certificates for you, and Coach, don't go too far, we're going to have you take a picture with them, so we'll have you all come up, don't worry, we won't embarrass you too much, just come over here and you can take pictures. So Jagger, Colton, Elliott, Camden, Xavier, Owen, and Grant, I hope we got you all, so come on up. So, we'll do, how about you do here, and then we'll, Joni, if you just want to move here two seconds, do you want to take here?
Yeah.
As always, we know, students and families have a busy schedule, so you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you are also welcome to exit out. So thank you again, and congratulations. We'll just give them a second to go, hey, no worries. I had a weird instinct to want to tell them I ran a mile today, I don't know, it's like, can't they run, I run, I don't know. Okay, so next up on the agenda is citizens' comments. Pursuant to Policy BE, individual comments are respectfully requested to be limited to three minutes, and citizens' comment is expected that the committee and the public observe the following etiquette. Comments from the public should be civil, courteous, and remain in the scope of the school committee in consideration. For all those in attendance, it is asked that comments are kept to a three-minute limit, and lastly, members of the school committee will recognize the citizens' comment portion of the agenda is for the public to express their thoughts and concerns, and we as committee members will refrain from interrupting speakers during their right to comment. Any person who wishes to make public comment and voice their concerns will be treated equally with dignity and respect. And the first, the first person who signed up on the agenda is Lauren Brothers. If you'll just come over to the microphone, and if you can just say your name and address, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Lauren Brothers, and I live at 20 Dex Street, Jamestown, Rhode Island. I'm a science teacher at North Kingston High School. The first topic I would like to address is Canvas because of the survey results being presented tonight. I've had relatively neutral feelings about Canvas since we started using it a few years ago, but my most significant issue has always been the amount of time it takes to publish materials and do other navigating. I have done a lot of listening to my colleagues over the years, and I can tell you that the grade-sinking problems are still causing a lot of stress and precious time wasted when carefully maintaining both grade books, even for teachers who are very advanced with computers and did not have issues with Canvas before. Technology should be making our lives easier, but that's not always the case. These issues are supported by the data on Slide 7 of tonight's presentation. Additionally, many colleagues and I are concerned that a new LMS might not be any better, or it could lead to more years of figuring out how to do it after spending so much time on energy, and that's reflected in the answer to the final question of the survey, asking if we would want to keep Canvas or not. It's a complicated issue, and I hope that the concerns of classroom educators are taken seriously as we move forward. The second issue I'd like to address tonight is a serious problem that is widespread far beyond North Kingston, which is the rate of chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is tied to lower standardized test scores, graduation rates, and overall school ratings. I see the consequences of this among my own population of students, and it's been the number-one indicator of academic success in my classroom since I started teaching. I'd like to see more deliberate conversations about the issue, how we all can address it as a team, and I truly feel for the families struggling with this, and the problem impacts students of all backgrounds. It's difficult to catch them up while also proceeding with the class as well. Finally, I need to add that this afternoon, I found out that the high school is looking to expand its career programs possibly, and maybe even CTE programs, for careers that don't necessarily require a college degree, and that is a major step to reducing chronic absenteeism. And I ask you that you be as supportive as possible in the future about those endeavors. I have students whose academic standing and behavior have improved dramatically because of the machinist program. Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay to clap. Tony Silveira?
Hello, Tony Silveira, 56, Ellis Road, North Kingston. I'm here tonight as a teacher at North Kingston High School. I am very concerned about the HVAC and the air conditioning in our high school. It negatively has affected the fine arts program, also the gymnasiums, the weight room, and Room 145 photography. So I do see the memo on here, I'm here to help with any questions or comments with that, and also, I would ask that the teachers that work in those areas be included as you move forward, to make sure that our rooms are not missed again like they were last time, or also make sure that we have time to get our instruments or expensive stuff out of the way and work with you to get that done properly. The other thing I'd like to say while I have the microphone is I too would like to speak for my fellow teachers of our frustration with the Canvas versus Aspen. I know myself, as I went to post my grades this past week, what should have taken a half hour ended up taking two days, with all the issues of the technology not speaking with each other, it's not consistent, it could work great first quarter and then not work second quarter, there's no really a rhyme or reason to it, the two are just not talking, and as a professional, it's taking a lot of time, adding a lot of stress, and we can find better ways to use our time and technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Mumford.
Good evening, I'm Tony Mumford, 160 Railroad Avenue, North Kingston. I am here as a North Kingston bus contractor for 36 years in this town. My main goal in this town has always been my students of North Kingston. I am also in my career, where I am now having, as I say, the children of my older students, they are now parents. I have decorated my school bus for 36 years, all three of them, actually, I own four of them in North Kingston. I have done good service, I have had brand-new buses, I have done great service to this town, and I am very upset to think that one person could go behind my back when my phone is 24/7 at Mumford Services. You can call me anytime if you had a problem with some decorations on my school bus. If you have something to say, I would have definitely appreciated you came to me first. It would have been taken care of right away, you need not have to call the superintendent. Like I said, I have decorated for 36 years, the Santa Claus has been on the bus, I did not bring him tonight because I didn't want to make any more of a circus than it already is. I'm very upset, it really hurt my feelings, really. Like I said, I have dedicated 36 years to this town. My students are the most important thing, morning and afternoon, to make their ride enjoyable every day, in the morning and afternoon. I'm usually the first smiling face they probably see most mornings, and a lot of mornings, I'll tell you, we've had some rough mornings as far as weather and other things, but we always make sure we smile for the students of North Kingston. I appreciate you listening. From now on, if we do have a problem, Mumford Services has a phone 24/7, you're more than welcome to call, and we will communicate very well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Pam Panera.
Pam Panera, 710 Slocum Road, Saunders Town. I'm here tonight to speak on a few topics. First, I hope you accept the Building Subcommittee's recommendation to look at the WMS property for feasibility of building a new school there. This is now the second time they have made this recommendation. I was disappointed that the Building Subcommittee meeting was, in my opinion, heavily influenced and led by a school committee member. What was the point of requesting recommendations from the Subcommittee if the school committee was going to, again, my opinion, drive and lead the conversation? It was amazing to me that in the end, they actually got to recommend vetting the WMS site. I believe we saw an example tonight of the benefits of two middle schools. Second topic, NKHS Program of Studies, this is my annual plea to reinstate class rank. While not everyone values class rank, I will again advocate for those who do. There are students who find this motivating. Last year, there was compelling testimony in favor of class rank. To accommodate the various views on class rank, it could be an opt-in option. Academics are important and should be celebrated. I highly urge an opt-in option for class rank. I wholeheartedly support the bus drivers and bus monitors. They are unsung heroes of this town. I rode on Tony Mumford's bus, and my kids rode on their bus. Safety and respect are their top priorities, even when the school doesn't provide backing of that. They have the utmost highest standards and take pride in their work. My mom has been a bus monitor since they began in this town. She has never once been recognized by the school department, even though at her 70-plus years, hardly missed a day in the pandemic. It is not the pay or the benefits that keep them here, it's the love of the kids and the love of this town. Please show them some respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only names that I have signed up. Is anyone else here for citizens' comments? Sure, you can just come up and see Joni and sign up right there. Oh, is that the town council one already? It's okay, it's okay. No worries, sorry about that, we have back-to-back meetings today. Thank you. No, no worries. Thanks so much for doing it twice, and you can come on over, and just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, Dave Abadision, 87, Woodward Avenue, Gansett, North Kingston High School, a history teacher for, I don't know, this district, about 25 years or so. Full disclosure, I hate Canvas, but tolerate it. All right? After three years of numerous requests by teachers and the department heads, and you can check that in the department head minutes, by the way, it was finally nice to get an opportunity to get some feedback on Canvas. I'm not sure why it's taken it, taken this long. Are we afraid, are we afraid of, are we afraid of the truth? Are we afraid of something that you might hear? Is that true simply that we have a differing opinion of what was given to us? Is it the fact that we're afraid of, we weren't asked for our input when we originally bought this program? I'm not quite sure, but we need to move forward. It probably explains mine and probably yours frustration and confusion with the results. The survey questions were probably not asked the right way, and they probably led us into this direction where we had some confusion. But many of us can't take another workaround with Canvas. Just this week or last week, as my colleague said, and I totally agree with everything that was said earlier, we constantly get emails, "You have this problem, try this workaround." "You have this problem, try this workaround." I've responded a couple of times now to some very nice people who gave me workarounds and wrote, "I can't take another workaround, enough is enough." I can't guarantee that my grades are right. That should be like disturbing enough, that a teacher with 25 years is telling you, "I can't guarantee my grades are right." My grades go, this is not sixth grade, it's not fourth grade, my grades go on transcripts. My, and it goes to what someone said earlier, class rank? I wasn't going to say anything about that, but I don't think you do class rank unless you get these grades straightened out. There's a simple solution to this, and you'll like this word, it's free. Just use Canvas as a plan book, and let us enter our grades directly into Aspen. What would be the harm? All it would be is positive benefits. Grades would be accurate, the parents could see their grades, kids would see their assignments still, parents would see their assignments, parents would see their grades, everything would be accurate. No harm, no foul, you could still have Canvas, and yes, Canvas is used at the college level, my son uses it at the college level, he loves it. But there aren't grades going back and forth almost on a daily basis. It's used as a syllabus, right? It's much different. And lastly, what I may say, allow us, here's my solution, stop mandating grades entering into Canvas at the second semester, let us put it directly into Aspen. And just use Classroom, Canvas as a Classroom Plan Book. And I was, I was happy that we were able to give some minimal feedback, but I like that to continue, and I like, again, if teachers were invited to technology meetings. We have not been invited to a technology meeting in over three years. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on, thank you so much for those comments. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Duba.
Thank you. And we have two items on my Superintendent's Report for this evening. The first one is an update on our Finance Director opening. I am very happy to say that we had a successful interview and successfully putting forward a candidate as our Finance Director. The School Committee has approved, and Lawley needs to, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I'll mention it when we do the disclosure from executive session two, so you can just give your part, and then we'll do that part later.
Sure. So, we do have a Finance Director that I will be meeting with. We are holding off on a name until that person is able to talk to their current employer, and once that has happened, and we're, we can move forward with approval, we will make that announcement. But I just want everyone to know where we're at, and very excited about moving forward with that. The second item on my agenda, I just wanted to share out that earlier in the year, we talked about hearing from students and the importance of student voice. Mr. Meznadi and I, we've been going around and meeting with students, student councils at the elementary level, as well as the Student Union at the high school. We haven't met with the middle school yet, but it is on our schedule to do so, and the importance of these meetings is because we're talking to the students, we're asking them, what's, what's working well in your school? What do you love most about your school? And, and what are some things that we can work on? How can we make your school even better? And really listening to them and giving them a voice at the school level, but also at the district level, and letting know we're here to support them, work with them, and we're really excited about these conversations we're having, there's a lot of great ideas that they're sharing. Today, we were at Stony Lane, they talked a lot about different things that they'd like to see happen for like after-school programming, they talked a lot about coding and having more coding at the elementary level. When we were at Fishing Cove, you know, they shared as well about programs they want to see and improvements in their building. When we were at the high school, we talked about safety in the building, classes they're having, and just really talking about that student voice and how important that is. So we're going to continue with those meetings with the students, and we really hope that's going to make a difference here in the schools.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions regarding the Superintendent Report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to routine items. The first item is executive session, so first we'll make a motion to seal the executive session minutes from December 18, 2023?
So moved.
Okay, so, so motion from Mr. Case, second from Ms. Lima. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I will disclose that we did take two votes in executive session today. Dr. Duba did mention the one about the Finance Director, and so once that contract is signed, we'll most certainly disclose all of that information to the community, and then also a vote on the members for the Audit Committee, that will be sending those names over to the town council, and those numbers, names will become public via their agenda. Moving forward to the consent agenda, does anyone want to exempt anything from the consent agenda before we make a motion? C1? Okay, Tom?
C1.
Okay. C1 and 2? Okay. Got it. And then, anything else? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve what's remaining on the consent agenda, which is B1, C2, and 3?
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Case, second from Mr. Brighty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll go back up to C1. Okay, hold on, let me just make a motion, Tom, and then we can do discussion, no worries, no worries. So can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay.
Just a point of order.
Yes. Yep, okay. Andrew?
So you would basically reseal those minutes as amended?
Yep, I think Jen's saying like, do we?
Unseal them? No.
Yep.
Nope, nope, they remain, the minutes were sealed, now someone's just amending them, so those amended minutes will then be sealed as well.
How do we, how do we discuss what needs to be amended?
You can discuss that, just, just the amendment, just none of the contents of the minute. Yep, sorry.
All right. So, I'll make a motion to approve the, to do executive session minutes of December 5.
Second.
Okay, and then we'll open it for discussion. You want the attendance altered?
I just want the minutes to reflect what I was presenting.
Perfect. Okay. And then, okay, so we can do that, and then so...
Make a motion to reseal now.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to reseal the minutes as amended.
Wait, hold on, Andrew, sorry, for Robert's rules, and we're in a motion, right? So do we need to vote on that and then reseal?
Correct.
Okay, so first we'll take the motion, so we have the motion on the floor to approve these, we have the request for the changes in it, and so can I get a motion to approve those? Oh no, I'm sorry, I'm going to call the questions, excuse me. Okay, all those in favor approving those, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now, that's that, I need another motion now to seal, please.
I make a motion to reseal the minutes.
Okay. Okay, so we motion second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks so much. Robert's rules, aye. Moving on to item, I believe D1 is next? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a, I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Okay, and then we'll open it for discussion. Ken or Mr. Waterman, anybody want to talk about the item that's on here for the high school HVAC?
Certainly. So in front of you this evening is the architectural engineering fees to upgrade the HVAC units in the chorus room at the high school, the computer graphics lab, which I believe is room 145, and a series of rooms up on the third floor, 300 A, B, and C. The A and E fees consist of general architect fees, the mechanical engineering, the structural engineering for the rooftop units that would go up on the roof, and then the final commissioning of the units. So there's a proxy...
Sorry, I'm just going to actually, we just got a correspondence that there's no video being live streamed, so I'm just going to do a quick recess and then we'll check on that and then, so we'll just pause for one second. So I'm just going to call a five-minute recess. Second.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about the disruption, we just wanted to make sure that people, it was streaming and it is, there was maybe just some issues, I know there's a lot of power outages and internet outages and whatnot around town, but we are definitely live streaming and it will also be taped, so just wanted to make sure that that was good. So thank you for the clarification. Okay, sorry, Mr. Waterman, we will go back. So we have a motion on the floor to approve NKHS HVAC. And Mr. Waterman, we were in discussion for that, so go ahead, Mike.
Yes, so there's approximately $327,000 left on the bond, so in consultation with the architects, they believe that this is what can get completed with the remaining money. It's not the entire school, but it was areas that were deemed to be priority.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Duba, anything that you want to add as far as priority, et cetera?
No, I don't, we're just looking to do what work we can get done right now with the funding. We know there's other areas within the high school, but right now, this is the scope of work that we can do within our, that's within our budget.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the committees or the committee or comments?
So I had a question. So according to what's in the packet, it's going to be the coral room, the computer graphics room, and rooms, three rooms on the third floor. So what is the plan for the balance of the rooms on the first floor that don't have the AC?
So those we're including in our next capital improvement plan.
So, okay, so it's not any time in the short term?
No.
And who was, who made the decision as to what, like, makes those the high priority ones?
So part of it was the superintendent and I looked at areas that we'd received feedback on, as well as the architect on, from a funding perspective, which areas could be completed. So we did try and prioritize, so there's a number of office spaces, we did try and prioritize areas where students were learning.
Okay, okay. Hey, other questions or comments from the committee?
And were people in the building consulted about that?
I will say just some of these rooms, that teachers did come to me as I walked through the building, of these are the rooms that needed the AC. So yes, I would say that is consulting, because as I'm in the building walking around and hearing from teachers of concerns, that was brought forward. Unfortunately, right now, with the amount of money we have, we cannot do the entire area that's needed, but we did prioritize with what we have here.
And I do know that this list has been carried forward from previous years.
Okay, okay. So the, hold on, I just lost my spot. The computer graphics lab, is that the photography lab?
It is.
It is, okay.
And is there a short-term solution for the areas that are not going to be covered in this? Is there anything we can do short-term that still falls within the budget or...
So what I would, what I'd like to see is, so this project still has to be designed and then go out to bid. It is possible, once we get the bids back, some of these might even fall off the list, so we're not sure where we're going to land once the RFPs come in.
I think like, to Rob's point, like even something like a air conditioner from Home Depot type of thing, like is that, if we could maybe like circle back once this is drawn up to see...
So the challenge with those is those require ventilation. So a traditional, so there are electrical concerns and then ventilation concerns. So I heard the gymnasium mentioned, we're not going to find, you know, that's going to be rooftop.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking at the gym, but I'm like, I'm looking at maybe some of the other smaller rooms on the first floor that maybe aren't slated for this round.
I think too, we have to, for this particular one, like we're looking at, the proposal's very specific for what we're looking for, and it's very like keyed in on these three projects, so it looks like even if we were, like that's not part of the scope of the project at all. I know you're talking conceptually, but I just want to make sure that we're really clear about what...
Yeah, no, you know, obviously I'm going to approve this, but I guess I'm, there is still the first, there is still needs on the first floor that I'm now hearing aren't going to be until the second round, and this was missed from way back when the building was built, so I'm hoping to see a plan brought forward to address the balance of the...
Jen, I would say we'll follow up on this and we'll look, see what we can do, and if there are, you know, if there's funding that can be used, we can revisit this. But I think we can definitely look and see if there's something that could be done in the meantime that fits in within the requirements of the building setup and what we can do within classrooms.
Just to clarify though, Ken, for this particular project, like if, say they went through, so we're looking for folks to design, et cetera, right? That's what, we're basically approving a proposal to go out and do like the M and E for this, right?
Right, this is, this is what the design for the A and E services.
Yep, and so, I know this won't happen, but like if these three came in less than budget, like it won't cover that scope of like doing that additional work, looking into what else needs to be done, et cetera, right? Just to make sure I'm clear on...
With the amount of, you know, the 327,000 that we have, I think it would be very tight if anything came in even under to go do a whole other room or area of the building. We would have to actually look for additional funding on top of the 327 that we do have.
All right, that makes sense, thanks for the clarification. Any further questions? Okay. Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve the NKHS HVAC improvement to move forward on this project. All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you so much. We definitely will have further conversations about the things that we need to do in that building, of course. So moving on to reports, we have two reports. Item one is a report on the joint meeting with the town council and the school committee. Dr. Duba, do you want to do that one or do you want...
So that meeting was to have a preliminary budget hearing and to share with them our right now predictions of where our budget would be for FY '25. Obviously, we're in the very beginning stages of putting that budget together, working with our administrators and administrators, you know, school building administrators working at the school level with staff. But we did put predictions forward based on what we know with current salaries, contracts, programming, and needs, and looking at what that may be, it does, you know, show that it could be a 3.6% increase in our budget for next year. We did hear from the town administrator to do our best to bring forward a budget that has a minimal increase, but we do know that salaries, contracts, items that are bound by contracts represent a high percentage of a school department budget. So in putting a budget together, there is some room to look at increases, but we also have to look at the education that we want to provide to our students and how we are supporting instruction and buildings throughout the district. So we'll do our best to come in with a budget that has very little increase, but we also need to make sure that we're funding the school so we can continue providing high-quality education to our students.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions regarding that report? Okay, and we'll move on to a report from the asset management commission, and so I'll turn it back over to Dr. Duba.
Yes, we met Thursday night with the asset management commission. We provided them a capital improvement plan for the district over the next five years, which looks at renovations throughout our buildings and needs for our school buildings. We did have some feedback from them regarding the plan we put forward, the amount of money that we're asking for. They encourage us to really look at that and make sure that we are putting together a plan that, to make the school department successful and really ask them for, you know, what we need in order to do the work. They're trying, they will be working with the town along with our capital improvement plan from the town's capital improvement plan, and really looking at how we can budget for the future for capital improvements throughout the town.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions regarding that report? Okay, we will now move on to subcommittee reports. First one is the policy subcommittee, Jen?
At the 12-13 meeting, the policy subcommittee continued to discuss the drug and alcohol and teen dating policies. Administration created a combined version of the existing JICH and JICHR, which are the drug and alcohol policies, that has been updated to reflect best practices. The recommendation is to sunset JICHR once the revised JICH is approved by the school committee. Both of those policies are on our agenda this evening. JBA, which is the teen dating, was narrowed down to focus on dating violence only as required by statute, and the recommendation for that is to sunset the JBAR once the JBA is approved by the school committee. Both of those policies on our agenda this evening. Transgender student hate speech and the advisory committee policies will be on the agenda for our next policy subcommittee, which is scheduled for Thursday, 1/4. I think I left the date off, I think it's the 4th, at 5:00 PM at the central admin building. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions regarding that report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next report, building subcommittee, Rob or Ken?
I'll just say that the building subcommittee met on December 13th. We had a lengthy discussion of next steps for the bond, and there was a recommendation made to the school committee for both the stage two submission and a Wickford Middle School feasibility study that I know we're going to be talking about later.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Duba, anything you want to add? Okay. Any questions regarding that report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. The first item on the agenda is CIP, existing bond, future bond, I'll make a motion for discussion. Okay, second from Ms. Lima, and so we'll open it for discussion, I'll turn it over to Dr. Duba. To kind of, we can maybe start with the recommendation from the building subcommittee, and then also we can talk about the results from the survey second.
Sure. So I'll just add to what Mr. Case was saying regarding the building subcommittee. Recommendation was made by the subcommittee to bring to school committee to look into doing a feasibility study at Wickford Middle School property to see if that land could be used for a possible building of a new middle school. We did talk about, you know, the one school versus the two schools. The committee did share that they would like to have more feedback regarding that from the community, we know a survey was sent out. So the recommendation is to see if the land is able to be used. There's reports that it might have been a dump years ago, that cars could have been buried there, so we have to make sure that there's no contamination. Even if there is contamination, there are ways that the land can be used, however, there's a cost to that, and we need to know the exact scope of what that would entail if a school building was to be built on that land. We also discussed the capital improvement plan that we put forward, which does have detail into all of the renovations that are needed throughout the district, at the elementary schools, as well as the high school. And it was recommended to, you know, look into that as well as the possible next steps if there isn't anything that can be done. If, you know, looking to a feasibility study, land can't be used, then, you know, holding on a middle school at this point until we can get more information and just put the efforts into renovations throughout the district.
Okay, thank you so much. Does the committee have questions on that item, or do we want to talk about all of it? Ken and Peter, you want to proceed?
I think it makes sense to talk about it all together.
Yep, okay. So, so again, thank you to the building subcommittee for their recommendation. And then, I'm not sure, we were having technical issues, it's either attached to the agenda or I also just shared it with the committee members, the synopsis of the summary of the reports, we will make sure that that gets publicly attached as well as presented on the website for the school project as well. But it did just close, so we were, we were trying to make sure that we had a document, and so in your inboxes and/or on the agenda, there is a summary of the community feedback for the bond referendum. As a reminder, we had sent out a committee or we had voted on November 16th to send out a survey with open-ended questions to the community to kind of figure out their continued efforts, in our continued efforts to receive feedback. In the report as well, you'll see the other ways that we did engage the community throughout the process, in addition to the survey that we just sent out. And then the results of the survey, we launched it on November 21st, the deadline was December 14th, and the, to advertise it in a variety of ways, social media, the website, an ad with a QR code in, I think, both local papers. And as a reminder, the survey had four questions. One was if it asked with an open text box, if you supported the bond as written, please explain why. Second question was if you did not support the bond as written, please explain why not. What would you support for a bond in the future? And then additional comments and questions. And so the responses for the survey, we received 483 responses before we closed it on the 14th. That is 2.2% of eligible voters in the town, as reported on the Department of State website. And there is a note in here just considering the low survey results as far as reliability and validity. And then basically, as you can see in the document, there is about 200 comments received for question one, which was about supporting the bond, and about 264 comments received about why folks in town, respondents of the survey did not support, and there are some themes there that we can go through. And then the last two questions were kind of what would you support and additional comments and questions. So I'll give the committee a moment to just kind of review that, and then we can go from there. And then, as far as question one, this was the supported, again, this was not a quantitative survey, so it's not like this many people said this, but there were some themes that came through of the 200 respondents that did fill out the survey. One of the themes was that they supported it because they felt that our current schools were outdated and there was a need for updated facilities. Another theme was that the, they supported it because of the financial reasons, including state reimbursement, possible inflation costs of waiting, and the monies that, money that would be required to keep the current schools open. And a third was identified as supporting the bond because it was good for the community. And then the fourth theme was that there was no other option, so they basically had supported it, but they felt like they, they had to support because they wanted to support it, and there wasn't, you know, that was the plan, basically, was the theme there. And then for question two, which was if you didn't support the bond as written, again, 264 comments, and the response to this, one theme was that they didn't support it because the way that the bond was written, two projects, with the two, two projects on question one. Another theme that was identified was that they didn't like the overall facility plan itself. The third was that they did not like the combined middle school plan. And the fourth theme was due to financial reasons focusing really on tax impact. And the fifth theme was a lack in trusted elected officials. Additionally, it's important to note, 110 respondents indicated multiple reasons for not supporting the bond, so there was like a combination there, but the combination of those were all like indicated in the above themes for the majority of responses. And then question three, which was that support for the bond in the future, there was 405 comments there. There was not... There was not writing responses as far as the theme. It didn't produce any additional themes that had not already been stated in question one or two. But there were some themes there about separating, or some, some themes that mirrored the results from above. So separate questions on the two facilities, clear information on tax impact to residents, more information about the cost of renovating and building two facilities, and a clear plan for the vacant school facility if Wickford Middle School was to become vacant. And then in the last question, which was additional comments or question, there were no themes derived from that section. However, suggestions were to explain the potential impact. There were some suggestions in there that weren't necessarily themes that were, had not been said otherwise that we noted, potential impact on employees. So what it would mean if you combined a school or didn't combine a school, what that would mean for employee jobs. Someone noted the start time at the high school and also making sure people were clear on voting locations. Okay, comments, questions from the committee as far as next steps? Dr. Duba, is there specific things as far as what you need approval on right now as far as things that you're hoping that will move on as far as additional work, et cetera?
I would say it's to review the, the recommendation that's coming to you from the Building Committee and next steps from the School Committee for moving forward. We also have to give that off to Town Council so that way they're able to put out a bond question.
Yep. So as far as timeline tonight.
Further on, we do have contracts for discussion for OPMs. We do need to make sure we have OPM services for any work that we move forward to for the Stage Two. So we'll be looking for approval of the recommendation to do the feasibility study at Wickford as well as moving forward with the capital improvement plan that we created.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the committee or comments?
I just want to make one observation. You know, the, it's obvious a good faith effort was made to try to solicit information from the community about why people supported and didn't support the bond. I think whatever we do going forward, we're going to need to do a better job of communicating with the community. I think we made a very good faith effort to do that, but clearly the message didn't get through. And it's my hope that in the future, we may be able to rely, or the community may be able to rely on a better communication system, maybe with professionals. I know other communities succeeded with their bond efforts by doing that, and I think we would benefit from considering that in the future.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Just to clarify, do you mean hiring like a communication company?
That's exactly what I mean.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, other comments or questions?
So the feasibility study is, I know we had talked about doing that before. We were, and at the time it was only, we were only focusing on the Davisville site. And the reason why we would be pursuing it at this point is if we were potentially going to be looking at either a two-school option or whether we were going to focus maybe just on doing something at Wickford. And that's why we're looking at, looking for authorization to proceed at doing that feasibility site now.
Correct. We want to know if that land can be used. We know there's a lot of questions out there of why we're not looking at that site or moving forward or using that site. The first step in knowing that to make a decision would be doing the feasibility study.
And a question on that timeline for how long a study like that will take?
So the first phase, it's a desktop review. And so in talking with, with Jacobs, you know, they're the OPM on this, they do believe that we would be able to have this done to submit our Stage Two in February.
So I get, I remember, I remember all the different stages from when we did it at Quidd and, and the DMS site. I guess my question as far as timeline would be is, it's good that we could have that by the February deadline, but it does not sound like we'll have any information before we need to submit bond language if we want to get it to the Assembly, General Assembly when they open. Is that correct as far as timeline?
That's correct. I don't believe we would have information as, you know, early January.
Okay. Other questions from the committee or comments? Ken, can you just clarify again, like what the motion was at the Building Subcommittee? I want to make sure that we're just really clear in what their recommendation to us was.
Sure. They were recommending that we, that, so their recommendation to the School Committee was to do a feasibility study for Wickford Middle School site to see if that area can be used and to also, along with that, to be able to move forward with the recommendations of the renovations that we have in our capital improvement plan as far as asking for a bond and waiting on specifically building a new middle school until another, they said, you know, maybe another year. They don't want anyone waiting five years out, but just to give us more time. So basically, the work that would be getting done now would be looking at a smaller bond to do renovations and then continue work looking at the middle school.
Does that, that does not include the middle schools though, right? If I remember the recommendation correctly?
Correct.
So can I ask a question? So at our last School Committee meeting, we had talked about how the Building Subcommittee had made the recommendation to the School Committee. I can't, these microphones are weird. Had made the recommendation to the School Committee to put forth the recommendation for one consolidated middle school. And so after the bond failed, we talked about asking the Building Subcommittee to revisit that recommendation and come back to us with a, a different recommendation. And so I'm wondering, and we talked about this, like the data that was used to make the initial recommendation, is there new data that has caused a different recommendation?
So what was discussed at the, the Building Subcommittee meeting is that using the information from the master facility plan, right? That was used to kind of move forward with a, with a one-school consolidated school. However, after the vote and seeing that what was put out there wasn't passed, what was said by some committee members, that reflecting on that, they would like more information from the community as far as what they want to see in their schools. And because of that, they don't want to put forward a recommendation of one or two schools at this time until more information can be provided. They also knew the survey was being completed. We didn't have the results to review at that meeting. And that's why it was put out there to wait on a decision of a middle school model.
Yep, and just to acknowledge the timing challenges. So we had like three different things happening last week. Obviously, we had the Asset Management Committee that involves the CIP. The Building Subcommittee had met, thank you. And then like we have this meeting now, and when we, we wanted the survey to be open as long as possible, but then also we didn't know the date of the Building Subcommittee when we set that end date. And so, you know, they didn't have the information here. Again, it's, it is a very small sampling of, you know, eligible voters too. So even if they had it, I think, as I mentioned, you have to kind of take it with a grain of salt, for lack of a better word. But I think, so what's challenging is I think, and, and I was at the meeting in, in Mr. Brady's spot, like it, they did a very nice job thinking through all the different options. They didn't have this information, but they presented kind of based on what they were thinking and then also what they felt should, should move forward. But there's no, I don't think any additional data that they had presented that the School Committee hasn't seen yet.
Okay.
Is that, Rob, would you, would you agree with that statement?
No, I would agree with that. And, and I think that, I agree, you know, I think there's, I think there's still a lot of questions from the residents of this town. And I was one that spoke up at the Building Subcommittee and said that I think we need to actually do the Wickford Middle School feasibility study this time because I don't think that we're going to be able to move forward until we have the answers to that question. And I think that that will, that will push us, and part of the continuing discussion that was had off of that was that this should help us make an informed decision about one school versus two schools. And we also discussed, you know, we understand that we may not and very likely will not get the, we will just get our base reimbursement for this new middle school. And so that's something that we could, you know, probably run into with this, doing it this way.
Right, and I think, I think, I agree with what you said. My concern is what I'm hearing is two bonds back to back, and I don't see that as a likely positive, likely thing that would be likely to happen. Because our history in this town with bonds passing is not good. And I would not like to see us go out for two. I would rather see us wait till we had the information and go out. But I agree, we need to get the Wickford feasibility study done. I did, at the time, we discussed it the last time. I didn't think it was the right time to do it at that time based on those circumstances. But now I think things are different in that, you're right, we need to get that taken care of.
Jen, I just realized that your mic, just make sure, I don't know if you're speaking 100% to the mic. When you just said at the end, I could hear you much clearer, sorry. I could hear, I could hear, but I think it, the mics are tricky. I would, Mr. Brady, I hear, I thought you were going to say something, sorry? Did you all comment? Sorry?
No.
Oh, okay. I, I would agree with, with Ms. Lima. When we were presented with, I remember like the presentation from the architects when they were showing us whether or not we could put a centralized middle school at the Wickford Middle School site. And that's when I believe the committee was presented with, do we want to explore this option more? And I think based on that information at that time, we, we did not want to spend the resources or the time, you know, investigating that resource. I think when, when hearing, when hearing from the committee, you know, the, with the, the limited responses that we have from the survey, I think that that is definitely one of the, the challenges. I think there was obviously a lot of other ones as well. And so in addition to that, I do think that we need to work through what, if we're going to go forward with two schools, like I think we'll need a lot more information for the community, including like the costs and the tax impact. I think that was a piece that I saw, you know, as one of the themes, and making sure that people have a good understanding of that. And so I think, you know, I, I'll, later on the agenda, I will support that, that one on, you know, making, seeing if that site's even feasible, because I think that will help people understand the, the situation if it's not, or if it is, you know, it'll, it'll give us different avenues or options. And I, I, I still feel long-term, you know, the, the choice in the, what we put forward to the community was the right choice for long-term. I understand that the location's not ideal. I wish we had land more in the center. But I do think, you know, for the long-term, the one-school option seemed the best to me, and I have not changed my mind on that. But I, I do respect the Building Subcommittee's recommendation that we should investigate and look into the Wickford Middle School location a bit more. But I would say we'll also need some additional support from the town as far as, one, potential of continuing to, to look at that site. So if we do do some of kind of the initial work that we do have funding for and we want to continue to look into that process, like we need to really consider and have some support from the town, I think, on that piece. And then also, I think we need to really think through the, the other projects. I'm, I'm very concerned about putting forward a bond for renovations on the other schools, which I know we need to do, not addressing the two probably largest school issues that we have. And then the, the potential of, you know, having people not support a future bond for those projects. That, that's a huge concern for me. I understand why the committee would recommend it. I understand we're under the timeline for the February deadline for the Stage Two application. But I am concerned about like, like very close bonds. I, I don't fully have a good understanding of what the debt ceiling in this town could be and what like the town would support as far as how much money we could go into debt, et cetera. And so those are some, some concerns with that plan. I, I understand short-term, it seems like the right choice, but I am very concerned long-term. And I am very concerned long-term about the students, particularly Wickford Middle School and the condition of the school that they are going to and the teachers and whatnot in that facility. Like not doing anything to that building, like as part of like the next move makes me, makes me very nervous. And I, and I was a huge proponent of we don't want to invest in a school we're not going to be in for long-term, but with no kind of foreseeable plan, that, that makes me honestly very nervous. Other thoughts from the committee? Mr. Waterman? Sorry, this desk makes it hard for me to have peripheral.
No, it's okay. I was trying to give everyone else a chance.
I appreciate it.
So the only item I haven't heard mentioned up here tonight was part of the reason the Building Committee made the recommendation is because there are still bonuses, bonuses that expire in June that these other health and safety, educational enhancement projects would target and, and therefore be reimbursable. Somewhere in the 50 to 55% range is, is what we would still be targeting. Just, we'd be targeting different bonuses on a, on a different scale. So that, that was the other reason for the proposal to move forward now versus including the middle school. Kind of slow down, take the time to, to fully investigate the site, determine a, a plan forward, but still moving forward on, on these other projects. The roofs, which, which are, which are approximately $30 million worth of projects, pushing those off another year just increases our costs to, to repair them. The HVAC that we talked about, I, I know tonight we just focused on the high school. I believe the HVAC was touching every school, with the exception of the two middle schools, because we weren't doing any work there. So roofs, HVAC, we were looking at additions to some of our schools as well as adding walls. So, so there were some really great enhancements we were making to our other schools while giving us time to hopefully come up with a, with a solid path forward and maximizing our reimbursements from the state.
So just to clarify, what I think I'm hearing you say, Mike, is that if we, for the Stage Two application, which we know is due in February, like going forward with the renovations that we need for some of our other facilities, obviously will, will probably put us in the range of 50 to 55%. It's different because we're not doing some of the other bonuses, but we might be able to get to that point. Can you remind the committee the scope of what that might look like as far as like a number denomination? I don't think we have language, like we don't, we don't have that, right?
Do you mean a bond?
Yeah, like what, what the amount might be.
So, so, and, and I'm going to use round numbers.
Yep.
Just rounded off numbers. The number we presented on the capital improvement plan was approximately $90 million. At $90 million at a 50% reimbursement, traditional math would, would be 45 million. However, Forest Park has an FCI score above 65, and what we learned is Ride will not reimburse off of that. So Forest Park has approximately 10.8 million. Again, I'm going to use rounded numbers, so I'm going to round that down to 10 in this case, to make it $80 million of the 90 would be reimbursable at, at 50%, which would mean a $90 million bond would, would cost. And this is, this is not including interest and, and other fees. This is just work would cost approximately $50 million. However, what Ride mentioned to us, which was really interesting, is you can make a school like Forest Park like new, and that's in lieu of replacing it. So for example, if we were to add $10 million to the bond to bring it to $100 million and get a 55% reimbursement on it, a $100 million bond would actually come out to approximately 45 million. I know, take a second. So 90 million, take away 10 million that we would do to Forest Park because we would not get reimbursement on that because the FCI score is above. So a, a, so you get half of 80, which is 40. So a $90 million bond, we get, we get $40 million of reimbursement to a cost of 50 million. Again, not including interest and all the other fees. If we were to invest in Forest Park to make it like new, and, and the folks we talked to had said, you know, think of adding 10 million to the bond to do more extensive work to Forest Park, that could qualify us for an additional bonus and bring our reimbursement up to 55%. So 55% of 100 million lowers it to 45. I know I just said the same thing twice, but hopefully it made sense repeating it.
Okay, other thoughts, questions? I just want to be cognizant of time. It's 7:12. We have a hard stop at 7:30 and a lot of agenda items left. And we do have some action items later in the agenda as far as that. One thing I do think, you know, Dr. Duba, I believe last time we did a bond, the superintendent brought us kind of the draft language that they, they were looking for. And so perhaps at the next School Committee meeting, we could get presented with that from the administration?
Sure, I'm just going to say if I knew that, I would have had that for you tonight.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think we're at that point here, but I think as we get closer to, like I'm thinking about the timeline and stuff, like I, I did not anticipate it tonight or I would have asked for it. But I think, you know, just as far as procedural, I wanted to make sure that you knew that it came that way, because I think it's important for you all to have that voice in the language so we can work through that. But I do think, you know, if we are going to try to get the additional reimbursements for the, just the renovation work based on the recommendations, that, like we need time-wise, like we'll need that at the next meeting likely. And then also, just another comment, you know, I think, like basically what, what I think I heard from the Building Subcommittee's recommendation is like, and again, I think this is something that I need a little bit more information on, is like if we don't do anything in the middle schools, like this bond doesn't cover anything in the middle schools, like I, I am, I need a sense of timeline, I think, or kind of what our, our next step or a plan is, like how long would it be to come up with a different plan? You know, I still, and people know this, I'm not, I'm not confident that You know, I still, and people know this, I'm not, I'm not confident that it, one, one middle school won't pass in this town. I know people have lots of opinions on it, and I, I try to listen to them very carefully. But I, you know, the, a lot, some of the feedback in the survey was that people did not support the bond because of the combination. And when I'm hearing numbers like $100 million to just do renovations, not on two of our high priority schools, and then I'm thinking about the $167 million question we never got to ask. You know, it concerns me, especially with the fact that we could make the decision to ask again with just that piece if we had support from the town council, et cetera, for renovations in the school. And so I'm not saying that's the choice, I'm just saying, like, it's, I have not been convinced through, you know, data or conversations, that, that we couldn't get a $167 million school bond passed in this town, but.
I, I am very, like, I, I know that these renovations are needed, and I know that a lot of them have been on the list for a while. Like, I'm guessing that some of these high priority items have been high priority for a number of years. And it doesn't mean that they're not, haven't been high priority and that they're not gonna be high priority. I am very nervous at the thought of going out to bond for renovations that don't include the two highest priority schools, hoping that we can get another bond passed in a few more years for what is our highest priority needs. I, I don't have, I, I feel like the, the, the fact that this bond did not succeed was not necessarily on the merits of the plan. Yes, there definitely, I, I think that we've heard from the community that there were issues with the plan, but it wasn't judged solely on the plan itself. And I think that when we go back out, for us to go back out just purely on the renovations alone is, is doing a disservice to the students in the middle school. And I'm not comfortable not going out. I'm not comfortable going out with just renovations alone. That's just my one, my one voice. And I think that if that means that the timeline shifts or whatever, but I, I think whatever we move forward with can't be just for renovations. It has to include some plan for the middle schools, whether we put renovations for the middle school in there or, you know, we go back out with another combination, I, I don't know. But I, I just feel that to, to go from needing to do something with the middle schools to just saying, oh, we can deal with those later, is not, is not right.
Can I comment on that timeline for you? So, you know, if, if there is discussion about waiting because of the concern of putting, you know, requesting a bond now, you know, to do renovations and then another bonds, you know, in the near future for a middle school, you know, just kind of thinking of that timeline, we would, we would most likely wait on a stage two right now in February and submit a stage one in September of next year. So that would be stage one in September of 2024, which would also mean that we would only get the 35% reimbursement on any and all work that we do. And then the stage two would be due to Ride in February of 2025. So just, just keep that in mind with whatever way we go, what that timeline is, and what those reimbursements will be for the town. And I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to put that out there.
And I think the other thing we'd have to consider is projects like the one we approved tonight, we may not receive reimbursement on.
I'm sorry, what?
We, we would no longer have a, a stage one or two application.
Yep, wasn't that incorrect, I could be very wrong on this, as we've been circling around a lot of different options for the high school HVAC. Wasn't that on the previous bond that the town had approved? And so wasn't that submitted via plans there?
Bond, yes, but our, it was on a stage two that we have an extension on through February.
Got it.
To, so this, this project would've appeared on our stage two that we.
But in theory, the, in theory, right, couldn't you complete the stage two application with just that proj? I'm not saying we'll do this, but in theory, couldn't you just put that in? And then you would get likely maybe a higher reimbursement, but not obviously 50 or 55%?
We definitely wouldn't get 50 or 55%.
I guess what I was trying to say, Mike, sorry, is, um, like, in theory, we could put forward a certain amount of projects for the stage two application that is due in February to try to get some reimbursements, like some more reimbursements than 35% that we normally would get, but, and not bond out. Is that an option?
So this isn't, this is separate from the bond. This is reimbursements from Ride, so this is.
No, yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying, like, is there a world where we could get higher reimbursements than 35% but not have to go out to the town for a bond? Like, use money, use other money, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Use, use, so you're saying use capital money?
Yep.
To do which project now?
Specifically the one you just mentioned, the HVAC at the high school.
So, so it's not about the funding of the project? It's about our stage two, not having a stage two in?
Does anybody understand what I'm saying?
I do, I think, I think, like, so we wouldn't put in, like, the big stage two. We would put in, like, a little stage two for this HVAC and maybe a couple other things. And then we would put in the big new stage one in February, right? Is that what you're saying?
Whenever it's due.
Yeah, whenever it's due. So like, we would still submit a stage two, but it wouldn't be for, like, the big ginormous.
We could put some small, a small project in a stage two in February.
Yep. That would have, like, the HVAC and, um.
I'm not saying it's the best plan, I'm just trying to understand.
And then what you're saying is, any, everything else that we do, we take more time through the rest of this school year of what that plan will be and submit a stage one in September, which puts us back at a timeline of a stage two in February of 2025.
Yeah, like, I was trying to say, like, trying to get some reimbursements.
Our, our stage two can consist of anything that we say we need to do. It could be as small as we want, as large as we want. It could just be a few projects, that are minimal projects. We submit it, so we get reimbursement, and that's our stage two.
All right, any questions? Obviously, we're not gonna completely land the plane on what we're doing here. And we obviously have some action items that I want to make sure that we get to. Does anybody have any additional questions that maybe we don't have answers for tonight, but that we would like information at future meetings? You can also always send those to Dr. Duvall and Mr. Waterman as well via email, but not with the whole committee, just directly to Dr. Duvall.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Would it be possible to move up items D and E while we're talking about this?
Yep, yeah, I was going to table a bunch of stuff too, so get excited. But yes, so, okay, so any other discussion on the item that we have open right now? Okay, let's move. So I'll make a motion to move item D and E from New Business to be next on the agenda. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, and so we'll move to those items next. So the next item on is the OPM. I'll make a motion to approve the OPM service proposal for stage two submission. Do we have a second? Okay, and then we'll open up discussion, I'll turn it over to Dr. Duvall and Mr. Waterman for that.
You can review that.
So this is a not to exceed number because it could vary for, for exactly what we were just talking about, the number of projects in there. So it's a not to exceed number based off of the OPM's bid, hourly bid rate for the middle school project. So this is for any services that we would need to complete a stage two. Again, whether it's for, for one or two projects or for the entire capital improvement plan.
Okay, questions or comments from the committee? And we don't, just to clarify, any question on, like, the, the purchasing processes? We don't have to go back out to bid for this because?
This is all still the same project, we're just extending the contract we have with them?
Yep, and that, Mr. Anderson, see, that's fine? All right, just wanted to confirm that. Other questions from the committee? And the funding source is?
The funding source is from the $100,000 technical assistance that was approved at the last meeting.
Perfect, thank you so much. I just want a clarification for ourselves and, and the, the community. Okay, other questions on this? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the OPM fees for the feasibility study, please say aye. Okay, motion carries, we'll move on to the next item, which is, which one did we just do? Thank you, so we'll move on to E. I'll make a motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion on this one? Ken, Mike, do you wanna?
So this is approval of the OPM fees at the same rate as the previous one. This is to start the feasibility study. The first stage of that would be an ESA Phase One, which is a desktop review. And then that will, from there, that'll kind of guide our work as to what comes up in there, you know, we'll.
Yep, yep, but what they find determines the journey we take, okay. Other questions from the committee regarding this one? Just to clarify, the fee, like, what we're basically approving as far as the feasibility study, same funding source and, yeah.
Lower dollar amount, but same funding source. The not to exceed amount is lower on this.
Where is that, in the documents, sorry?
It's in the cover letter. So it's not to exceed $10,000. OPM fees for the feasibility study will not exceed $10,000.
Oh, I see it, thank you, at the, in the bottom, got it. There's two very similar-looking documents in front of me, so I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the correct one. Thank you.
Just one last question, you, they won't even have the first part of this done before February?
No, no, the desktop review, that's the first stage. They'll work with vendor of doing that, and that, that would be part of the state. If, if it doesn't, be part of the stage two application. So that would be completed in February.
But, but, but that's what I mean, like, the timeline, it won't be before.
It won't, it won't be before January. What was asked earlier, would we be able to know that?
Not yet, the time, okay, all right.
Jen, just to clarify that too, what I was talking about was, because if, to be able to, right now, with the deadline for the additional reimbursements, they pushed it to June 30th, 2024, right? And so to be able to go through all the processes, if we were gonna do another bond, like, we need to make those decisions, like, in January. But what I, what I remember kind of from the last process that we did, like, there's a possibility that, that this committee will have to make a decision about what to bond without knowing 100% certainty that WMS, like, is a viable site. And even if we did know it was a viable site, we wouldn't have the plans to go, like, forward on that, if that makes sense. So that's what I was talking about as far as the timeline goes. Like, we'll definitely be able, I think, to, to have it for that, the phase two, which will impact, I think, what we might decide as far as feasibility for what we want to do with, like, renovations for Wickford, et cetera. Okay, other questions on this one? Or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, so now we'll go back up and we'll see what we can accomplish. Okay. Is it 7:30 or 7:45? Okay, so we've, we, there's some things, okay. So, I would like to move the, no. All right, we'll just, we'll go on to the next item, which is the Canvas study results. And so I'll make a motion for discussion. Okay, well, I'll, I'll make the motion, so you'll second, Jen? Okay, and then we'll open discussion and we'll turn it over to whomever to give us, Rob?
I suppose Nadia has a presentation.
Wonderful. And just as a reminder, this survey results and having folks come back and talk at this meeting was a request that the school committee had made, I believe, last spring. There's no decisions being made this evening. This was really a result of when we had to approve the contract for this product last time. Our intent isn't to make any changes or decisions at this point, but we did want to make sure that the administration and the teachers were having conversations as we know that there are some challenges with some of the things that we heard this evening. And so we're really just on an information gathering, like, mission right now to be prepared if, when that contract comes up for Canvas, because I believe we only signed a one-year contract, if I remember correctly. So this is kind of like us being ahead of the information. So just wanted to make sure to set the, the stage for that. Okay, Rob, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'll try to move quickly because I know we are under some time constraints here. So first, there's a quick overview of why we conducted the study. You just kind of gave it an example there, Dr. Earl, but really, we want to check on the status of Canvas, implementation from our stakeholders, teachers, families, and students. We also want to use some data to inform our future decisions because we know that that is gonna be critical to moving forward in a productive way. We obviously want to gather stakeholder input, use information, get information of the use and the effectiveness of the platform in different ways. We also, we also want to get information about the frequency of the use and potential budget implications. What was the survey? It was administered to all middle school and high school teachers, parents and guardians, as well as students. Questions varied based on, on the group. There was a mix of question types. We had some that were more quantitative and some that were open-ended. And some of the things we looked at was, was frequency of use, the effectiveness of the system, the strengths and needs, and, and whether we should continue using. So we'll start with the teachers. First question that was asked was on a scale of one through five, with five being the most effective. How would you rate Canvas as a learning management system that supports your students and their academic achievement? So you can see the rate, the, the responses here. Middle of the road, pretty much, kind of that three standing out is the most common response of our teachers for that question. Next question is on a scale of one to five, five being the most effective. How would you rate Canvas as a learning management system that provides students with clear and consistent access to important information about your class? Again, similar results here with, with, again, threes and fours sort of standing out among the others a little bit in responses. This one, a scale of one to five, with five being the most efficient. How would you rate Canvas as a learning management system that supports you to more efficiently perform your job responsibilities? So here we can see that the responses are clearly demonstrating that, that teachers are frustrated with this, the efficiency of the system, as a, as a one standing out as the most common response there with 41 responses. This is a question, to what extent is Canvas helping, helpful in facilitating communication with parents and guardians? We can see the two colors at the top there, the green and the purple, are, are lower performers in, in terms of not helpful or a little helpful. So those are our two lowest ratings. So we can see that as a concern as well, as facilitating communication there with, with, with parents and guardians. So that's something that we have to obviously look at as a, as a metric. This is a question of what area of Canvas will be most beneficial to you in terms of receiving professional support? And they could check all that apply. The most common response was, I am not in need of support. But that was, there was a lot of responses that were other responses to this. So there were quite a few teachers who added their own sort of commentary about what they would, they would best, how would, they would best be supported in this, that were, that were not listed in this. Next to that not in need of support was syncing grades with Aspen, which was, which was a high number as well of, of teachers who were responding to what they would, what they would, what they're looking for in terms of support. This question was, was really straight up to the teachers. Given a choice, would you prefer to keep Canvas or switch to another learning management system? So you can see, it's a pretty divided response. We had 52.2 responding to keep it and 47.8 responding to switch to a different LMS. Here's some, some written summaries that teachers gave us in terms of the strengths, first off, to start there. They talked about, I believe the best part of Canvas, the ability for students to have access to assignments and announcements at home if needed. When creating an assignment, you're already creating a grading category for the assignment in a gradebook. Syncing works perfect for me, so that is the next best feature. Being able to save an entire course to be brought forward to the next school year is exceptionally convenient. Helps students prepare for use of LMS in college, all the features, especially quizzes. Being able to embed a third-party software like Turnitin and Savus Learning. The continued strengths, it provides a system for me to clearly present the agenda for my classes each day with links to websites and pages we'll be using. Additionally, it's very easy to make a grade of wide variety of assessments all in one place. As I've become more comfortable with the system, I've enjoyed learning about it more that has to offer, like discussions and EdPuzzle. Great platform to distribute work, tests, and quizzes, and more. Students can access Canvas from home or their mobile device with the Canvas student app. So that was some of the positive strengths that we heard from teachers. We also asked them to convey their concerns or challenges, and they responded to this. Student-parent interface is not as clear and organized as the teacher interface. It can be confusing for parents and students, especially with multiple classes, especially when students have an extended absence or missing many assignments. Next was Canvas does not sync well with Aspen, and constantly managing and checking that the grades are matching is frustrating and a huge time sync, time that's taken away from planning great lessons, preparing labs, emailing parents, et cetera. Parents and students should be directed to check Canvas for progress, day-to-day grades, and Aspen for our final grade postings only. This is the way I've been doing it for the last year, and I have zero complaints from parents or students. Students are so accustomed to checking their grades on Canvas, they wouldn't even know where to go on Aspen. No need to sync. Continued challenges, a lack of consistency with how each person uses it, poor integration with Aspen and Google, how much time it takes to post material, assignments, pages, et cetera. The number of clicks that it takes to do any of those things is unreasonable. It is excessive and not intuitive. Another challenge is the glitches with grade sync and rounding. Also, the whole process of setting up grade sync is tedious. Grading is much more tedious since grades do not need to be synced in Aspen for report cards, progress reports, everyone uses it differently, syncing issues with Aspen, hard to navigate. The syncing issue with Aspen came up a lot. That was really one of the most consistent points of feedback we heard from teachers with that, with this. Finally, syncing grades, students not knowing how to navigate the complexities of the program, sophistication of, and time dedicated to creating assignments. I know I'm speaking really fast, but I don't want to lose, run out of time today. Parents and Guardians survey results is coming next. So the first question was asked, how often do you check Canvas? So we had a very high number of, those two biggest pie pieces there, the red and the blue, were either every day or most days, or a few times per week. So as we, as we can see here, our, our parents and guardians are checking Canvas very often, at least a few, few times a week for most of them.
Can I just ask a quick question, Rob? What, did all age parents and guardians receive this?
No, middle school and high school.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it wasn't an email, thank you so much.
All right, this is a question of a scale of. All right, this is a question of a scale of one through five, with five being the most helpful. How helpful is Canvas in providing you with your child's updated academic grades? So you can see here, the most common response is a five, but we had a, a close four and then three. And so we, but we also had a decent number of ones as well. So it was fairly evenly distributed, but three, uh, fours and fives was our most common. Um, on a scale of one to five, five being the most helpful, how helpful is Canvas in providing you with updated information about your child's class assignments and due dates? Again, fairly uniform across the board, almost remarkable how common the five responses are here, um, which doesn't give you a whole lot of conclusivity, um, with that. But again, that's the response. And this one is a scale of one through five, five being the easiest. How easy is it for you to access and use Canvas to get the information you need? So you can see here how interesting that is in terms of the numbers of ones and the numbers of fives being the, uh, most common responses there. So, somewhat difficult to draw definitive conclusions from those questions, but I think that tells us something too. Summary of likes about Canvas. So parents and guardians were asked what they liked about it. Um, as a parent, I can always know what my child is expected to do for school and see the grades posted. I like being able to see homework assignments, upcoming test projects, app on the phone for easy access. All my students' grades are on, are in one spot. I can see teacher comments and rubrics for grading. I can also see class announcements in the calendar. Easy, easy access to grades as well as assignment due dates. Also, uh, like alerts as to when a grade has been entered. Um, teachers update assignments due, and you can see if something is missing. It's intuitive and provide lots of detail should the teacher desire. It's easy to navigate. And being updated on grades throughout the week and not having to wait until the quarterly reports. Those are some of our likes from our parents. They were also asked for any suggestions for improvement they might have. Some test or projects to be put in ahead of time, so we know when they are. Each teacher uses it a little bit different, but not a huge deal. Require all teachers to update in a timely manner. Teachers need consistent training and should be expected to use the tool the same way. Some teachers use it more frequently than others. There should be a way to delineate between class assignments and actual homework assignments, so parents and students can tell the difference. Perhaps modules are for classwork and assignments for homework. Continued suggestions, the organization of classes can be improved. Should parents and students look at the modules or the assignments? Encourage teachers to enter and update the information. Canvas does not always provide accurate information. Providing input, updating, grading on the part of teachers, although I know they do their best, and maybe a parent usage seminar. So those are some of our suggestions from parents. Finally, our students. We asked middle school and high school students to give their responses to the Canvas questions. So one of the, the first question was, how would you describe your use of Canvas? That, um, big 83.4% there is I use Canvas every day for all or most of my classes. Um, so that tells us that the students are using it, um, frequently, um, obviously is a, which tells us something. Um, next, uh, one through five, five being the most helpful. How helpful is Canvas in providing you with class assignments and information? Uh, most common response here was a four out of five, um, and the next highest was a three. This is on a scale of one through five, with five being the easiest. How easy is it for you to access and use Canvas to get the information you need? Um, so again, here, you see a decent, um, spectrum there, with fours being the most common response. Do your parents or guardians know how to access Canvas? Um, 42.5 said yes, um, 30.8 said no, and 26.7 said not sure. Student suggestions, um, these were, these were some of the things that they, they included. Overall, I think Canvas is a good source, although I know there is a task manager extensively for Kansas that seems to be useful, but currently blocked. Unfortunately, I think it would benefit several students. In my opinion, I felt that Google Classroom was easier to navigate. We had several students respond that way. Um, please don't, there's another student, please don't switch back, don't switch back to Google Classroom. Canvas UI and UX are so much more useful in the high stress of high school. Instead, try to give teachers templates for Canvas. That way they can get more out of it and provide Canvas workshops for students, so we can learn what it has to offer. Um, this is another one, Google Classroom had a much easier interface. I understand that Canvas makes it easier to access different files, such as PDFs and non-Chrome applications. However, in my classes, I rarely use appar, applications outside the Chrome family. Um, the only reason why it's sometimes not helpful is because it's not uniformly used throughout the school. I think it shouldn't be, either shouldn't be used or should be used all the time for everything. Otherwise, it's unreliable. Uh, Canvas in general is a very helpful tool for me to do my schoolwork. It keeps an ordered list of assignments that are due. It allows you to check for grade averages, both of which are helpful. Compared to Google Classroom, the feature I used prior to Canvas, it has many more features. I wrote Canvas is fine, but Google Classroom made it a lot easier to turn in assignments and find things, and overall works a lot better with the Canvas, with the Google ecosystem that our Chromebooks use. All right, so, uh, just to kind of bring it to the findings. Um, what we could see is that we're, there were some questions, obviously, that were difficult to, to really bring conclusivity to, but it can't be argued that Canvas is widely used by all. Um, we can say definitively that system efficiency for teachers, specifically with grade syncing, needs to be improved. And so we are going to work on that. Um, that's going to be something that we need to look at as far as that practice being, um, being, being analyzed and being improved, because , uh, right now, it's clearly the feedback we're getting on that, on that, on that topic. Um, there were several questions with inconclusive results, and there are some concerns about consistency. So we need to look at that. Um, so these are some, some questions, I think, that are, that are worth considering. Are there consistent expectations?
Rob, sorry. Um, I only, if, we only have five minutes left. Um, and so, um, my recommendation is that the committee can review the, the other two slides, or the, the, yeah, the two slides that we have remaining. Um, and then, uh, we can always email you in different questions. Sorry, but, no, it's fine. I really appreciate the, the report and the, the information. I just want to make sure that we can close up the meeting, um, in time together here. Okay, um, so, um, so, uh, being that, so if the committee can take a look at that and send questions or comments, um, to the administration, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, and again, we have some time on this one, but, um, I appreciate the administration and the folks that filled out the survey, um, in doing so. Okay, moving on. Um, as disclosed, um, we did vote on sending three names over to the town for the audit committee, so we don't need to, uh, address that item in this area. Um, the next one, I, um, the advisory subcommittee application rubric, I'd like to make a recommendation that we, um, table that item, unfortunately. Okay, so I have a motion to table this in a second. All those in favor? Okay, uh, moving on to the policies. Um, so these are first reads. Um, and so procedurally, Andrew, do we need to do anything for first reads on this one? To keep, to make it so that we can have second reads on the next agenda?
Nope, I believe.
So my recommendation would be that the committee review these, and if they have any questions or concerns, email, uh, Mr. Hennessy and Dr. Duvan with those. Just don't do an email with the whole school committee, and we'll see those again at our next agenda. And then, um, moving on to new business, um, the North Kingstown Program of Study. Um, this is intentionally on here, um, very, like, early for the school committee to be able to see and also the community. Um, and so I recommend that the, um, committee, uh, review that, and it'll be on for future, um, ones, but to get the, to email any suggestions to, Dr. Duvan, do you want them to go to you? Or directly to, to Shavali?
No, they can send them to me.
Send them to you? Okay, so if you have any thoughts or questions on that, please send them to Dr. Duvan. So before the administration comes, they'll have our questions. Um, so I'll make a motion to table that item. Okay, motion second. All those in favor? Okay, um, as I mentioned earlier, um, we, uh, actually, I'd like to make a motion to table item B, which is the participation in national social, uh, media litigation, so we can get more information. Okay, so motion second from, we'll go with this Lima. All those in favor? Okay. Um, and then the next item on the agenda is legislative priorities. Um, we are going to have a joint meeting with the town council, um, to discuss legislative priorities, um, that we might want to share with our state, uh, group. And so people can kind of think about some ideas and thoughts that they have for that, and send them to the clerk. That would be greatly appreciated. So send them to Jules and Joni, um, to kind of, no?
Actually, we sent them to Jeanette.
Oh, I want to compile them first, and then we'll send them to Jeanette. So if people want to submit those, um, to, uh, Jules and Joni, then we can kind of put those together before sharing them over with Jeanette, um, at the town. Um, so we don't, that item is there. Um, we already did D and E correspondence very quickly, Jen. We have three minutes.
Okay, 12-6 Karen Martone regarding the equity Title IX and wellness coordinator. 12-8 Sarah Boynie regarding the senior school project leader, school start temp for NKHS. 12-11 Andrew Propetier regarding school committee meetings. 12-11 Stacy Weinstein regarding menstrual products availability in school bathrooms. 12-12 Karen Martone regarding questions on the town council meeting of 12-11. 12-16 Karen Martone regarding school committee appointment. And 12-18 Mary Warbuck regarding the new school committee member.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, before we adjourn, just a quick note that there is a town council meeting, um, directly after this meeting. Um, and thank you to the town council for moving their meeting, so that these two meetings, um, would not be the exact same time, but also apologies to the committee that we had to move some items, um, along, uh, and for, for future meetings. So with that, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Okay, motion a second. Um, all those, that, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.